Members, so we don't need to appoint any alternates. First order of business is the approval of the minutes for the last meeting on the 5th of December. Any comments or changes? Anybody still?
I have three changes noted.
Okay.
Well, somebody else wants to go first.
Okay.
All right, now, this is always confusing. I'm going to give you a line number. It's 29 on my second page. It's just above the motion Mr. Gray moved to continue this public hearing. But the line says commented both in opposition of and in favor of cannabis. So several members of the public commentated. Commented both in opposition of and in favor of cannabis. I guess at the time I read this, I thought, that's not very clear. And I, it's still my point, it's not very clear. So I'm not going to suggest some other wording. I'm going to offer it as a criticism. It's constructive feedback. So I, line six on the next page, it's in the motion. There's an extra word there on line six. The word has, it's right in the middle of that line. It should just say for site plan. The application for site plan meets the standards. Has, has meets is not.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean. And then on. On page, on line 29 on the previous page. I missed this one. Just take it up a little bit here. Oh, no. No, actually, I'm confusing myself. I offer with those changes a recommendation that we accept the minutes as they were drafted with those two changes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain. Okay. The minutes are through six, nothing has modified. Okay. The next order of business is to continue our public hearing of the Simsbury zoning division. Application 22-32 for the, for the zoning regulation proposal. We had tonight two people from the industry who will testify before us. Benjamin Zacks is the chief operating officer of Fine Federal, which is a cannabis selling retailing operation with several locations, I believe. But I think Mr. Zacks is from Millington. Correct? He can tell us a little bit about his history and experience. And following him, Kristen Tangerone, who's the general manager of Curalea, will give us some of her experience. And when they complete that, if the commission has questions of them, we'll honor those at that time. And then we'll proceed to the public hearing for which they will not answer questions. Okay? So who's first?
Go ahead. Don't worry. I'm first. Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi. Hello. My name is Benjamin Zacks. I'm the chief operating officer of Fine Federal Dispensary. So we are a Connecticut-owned cannabis company. We have three of the 18 medical dispensaries in the state. We are in Willimantic, Newington, as well as Stamford. We also have three of the seven or nine dispensaries that are going to be opening for recreational sales on Tuesday, January 10. In addition, we operate dispensaries and cultivation sites in Massachusetts. We operate a processing facility in Rhode Island, and we were recently awarded a cultivation and dispensary license in the state of Georgia. But we are Hartford-based. Our team is all from here. We've been operating in Connecticut since June of 2019 in our first location. And I think one of the things that people oftentimes question and understand is what is, what are one of these facilities like? Right? And so we get a lot of questions, and I've been in a number of zoning meetings. Candidly, I can't even apply in Simsbury, so I don't even have a dog specifically in this race for approval or not. But I think it's important to understand the realities of the way that these facilities function and operate, and sort of the specifics of professionalism and operational care that we put into these facilities. So first and foremost, to have the opportunity to operate in Connecticut, you need to be awarded a license at this point through two various mechanisms. One of which is what's known as the lottery, which can be either done through the social equity lottery or the general lottery. And that's people essentially buy a lottery ticket and have the opportunity to win if they fill out their paperwork properly. The other option in Connecticut is what's known as, would be known as an equity joint venture, which would be a partnership between either one of the currently operating medical facilities within the state, either a cultivator or a dispensary, or one of the new disproportionate impact cultivation operations. And those would be partnerships of licenses between said licenses, as well as a 50% ownership of a, by a social equity applicant, which has been defined by the state. Once those licenses are given out, there's an unbelievable amount of paperwork and care that goes into building out these facilities. And so generally, what folks are looking for in these facilities is, you know, somewhere between a 1,500 up to however big they want their dispensary to be foot facility. And these are facilities that are unbelievably safe, secure, and professional right from the beginning. There is absolutely no entrance of any, so I'll talk in two sides of it. First about the customer, and then I'll talk about the product, just so everyone can understand sort of the level of rigor and safety that we're held to. So we'll talk about the customer first. So the customer, no one is allowed in the building whatsoever who is under 21 years old. So that's first and foremost. So everyone who even attempts to come into a dispensary facility in the state of Connecticut must show a real government ID. Us specifically, we scan those IDs with one of those fancy scanners to ensure that they're real, whether it's a passport or a state-issued, but a government-issued ID. Once they're into the facility, you're not just in the sales floor. You're generally in another secondary waiting area where someone else is checking and confirming your ID, and then scanning you into a state seed-to-sale tracking system to confirm and ensure that a person can't purchase above the legal limit of the allotment. Once their ID is checked again, they're generally buzzed in through an access control by a security team within our facility into the sales floor. From there, they make their purchase, whether it's done through a pre-order or whether it's ordered at the register like at a normal store. Then their product is taken from the back, which I'll describe when I talk about the product flow of these facilities. Taken from the back, prepped in a bag, put in an opaque bag, a completely closed product, ensured that it is the correct product. They pay with, they pay with cash or debit card right now because of the federal legalization. You can't use a credit card because technically a credit card would be a loan from your bank. And then they walk out the door. Right? So these are facilities that, so that's really the customer experience. There are specific means of egress generally that would not allow another way in. 360 degrees of these facilities, both inside and out, are under 100% camera coverage, other than break rooms or bathrooms. That's just by legal definition for employees, but 100%, 100% camera coverage. In addition, every area of access within the facility is given to another designation of access control. So even some employees can only go in certain areas, but customers need to be essentially escorted via access control and approved access through every single step within the facility, from the outside to the inside, from the waiting room to the sales area. And then they have a direct access out, which you would generally see in a floor plan. So that's, that's the customer side of it. On the product side, Connecticut has some, candidly, Connecticut has some of the stringent product storage rules in the country. I actually think the most in the country. So product comes to the facilities from a licensed producer, of which there is four, of which Kristen represents in this capacity, I guess, which is in, her facility is in Simsbury. And they come, they come 15 minutes before they arrive. They let us know that they're going to be there. They, two people in a car with designated product inside a locked vehicle with two folks in there. They ring the doorbell. We check on the cameras from the front desk. We ensure that it's them. They show us their state-issued badge. And then, once we know it's them, they come in with boxed product. Everything is closed, sealed, boxed, taped, et cetera, directly into a secure delivery area, and then into our facility, and the door is shut. The amount of time that the product is out of the vehicle to, once it's in our facility, is less than 30 seconds. Right? And so that's just simply for the delivery, and these deliveries happen once or twice a day, maybe four to five days a week. Right? So that's the only time available product would ever be viewable in a site is just as it goes from the trunk of the car directly into the door that gets locked and closed behind. Then product is counted in the back of our facility and put into a secure vault. And Connecticut's vault rules are unbelievably stringent. We're under the same exact vault rules as a pharmacy or what you would see in a bank. So we have eight inches thick of concrete on six sides with a one-inch-thick steel bean every 12 inches throughout the facility. And that's where product must stay at all times in the facility. There is no product on the sales floor. There is no seeing, seeing the product. There's no smelling. There's no little glass jars. And being able to see it and smell it, it is all held specifically in the vault in sealed, locked, childproof jars, or drams, or whatever it might be. And those are childproof, with a specific childproof seal as well. And so, and then when somebody puts it in order, you know, that product is specifically taken, what is just for them, again, put in an opaque bag, and gone out through the process. 100% of the time, all employees, all customers, all everybody's are, again, under 360-degree, 24-hour day, seven-day a week, with a 30-day backup camera coverage. That's all held, both generally onsite, and for us, we hold it, the data onsite and in the cloud. And yeah, that's really how these, how these things run. There's an, I mean, there's an unbelievable amount of, candidly, pressure and safety that we, and compliance that we are put on. Our safety and compliance rules are more stringent than a regular pharmacy that is selling opiates or any other, or a hospital pharmacy, or anything else that is mixing of drugs. There's no opening the product. There's no smelling it. There's no looking at it. There's no checking it. There's no testing it. And then the ability to come into our facility is, again, significantly more stringent. This is not like a liquor store where a parent can bring their child with them into the store, and then obviously they're not purchasing. This isn't like a liquor or food store where the product is up and available and people can take it. Everything from the first second to the last second is controlled and watched and held within our vault. So in addition to that, I think it's important to understand the reality that, you know, the product coming into. So cannabis is legal in the state of Connecticut, right? And you all, as a zoning board, have the, right, the choice of what to do with how you restrict or allow the zoning usage of a facility, whether it's a retailer, hybrid, or medical, or any of the other uses in the town. And one of the, I think, one of the things that is, but cannabis is legal in the state, right? And so it's, it is legal for someone over 21 or older to handle cannabis, candidly, whether it comes from one of our facilities or not. Right? And there's sort of a gray area of the reality of just how things are. Medical patients can currently grow their own, right, in the state. But the product that is in our facility is grown in facilities that are also under arguably more stringent rules than ours. Right? The way that they grow their product from the seed or the clone to the sale is tracked throughout. And then every product that comes within our facilities from one of the producers in the state, every product is tested to a level and standard of test that proves that it is healthy and safe and available, able for the consumer to, you know, trust and verify. So there is this sort of existential, existential debate that we sort of talk about a lot, just internally with our team, of this idea and the importance of having safe and legal cannabis versus potentially unsafe and illegal cannabis. There is a reality of a black market of cannabis that has been going on for hundreds of years. And I think we all can't pretend that that doesn't exist. And I think one of the things that's unbelievably important to understand with the way that we operate is both the safety of the operation and the safety and true understanding of the product, and knowing exactly what somebody is getting from a potency, which can be high, middle, or low, from a dosage size, from a dosage amount, from a means of consumption, that is all handled through our facility through an educated, teaching, customer-service-focused and oriented process in a safe and real facility. So, I mean, I think in terms of the facility, those are some of the key things. Some of the other things that we get asked, we get asked about the same three things at every zoning meeting, every single one. It is safety and safety, security, which I think I talked through. It's smell, which is another sort of key one, which I'll hit on, and then it's traffic. So I'll talk about smell next. Sorry. So the thing with smell is, the only way to put it is there is a very different smell between a packaged, you know, like a packaged product and the smell of somebody smoking cannabis. These are facilities that are holding childproof packaging, and the smell is, there is not burning smell. There's no fire. There's no flame. There's no consumption at all whatsoever in these facilities. And, you know, generally, these facilities, at least for ours, we install charcoal HEPA filters and other odor mitigation. But we haven't had any problems with odor in any of our facilities, candidly. You know, as a retail facility, we don't have a ton of ATRAC that is pulling out humidity, humidity and dehumidification that's injecting essentially the odor into, into a facility. We've had, you know, because landlords ask us to this as well, because we end up in shopping centers and the neighbors get nervous. And we have not, I mean, I can say anecdotally, but I can also give subjective, objective data, not just subjective anecdotes, that we've not had a complaint about smell in any of our facilities in any of our states. Candidly, we haven't even had a complaint about our cultivation sites. But in terms of retail, the product is never open. It is always closed in generally airtight containers. And so smell, is it normally an issue? The third piece, and the one that I think comes up often, is this idea of traffic. And everyone sort of ends up looking at, I mean, everyone ends up looking at the first start in Massachusetts, and that is sort of like the, I don't know if heebie-jeebies is a technical term, but gives everyone sort of like agita around what's going to happen in a town. And Massachusetts, I will say, when it went recreational, there were incredibly long lines and a lot of traffic around their stores. But if we look at the realities of what happened in Massachusetts was Massachusetts is a state of 9.6 million people. Connecticut is 3.6 million people. Massachusetts was the first state east of Colorado to approve recreational cannabis. And so, and there were two stores that opened the first day of adult-use cannabis in Massachusetts. And so when you bring, you know, what was probably 25, 30 million available consumers into two stores, that ends up being the reality. Right? Connecticut, for example, we've had stores in Massachusetts now. There's 225 stores in Massachusetts, which honestly, most Connecticut consumers are going to. Right? The stores in Springfield are probably doing 50 or 60% of their sales from Connecticut customers. But there's been a dissipation of the specific demand. Right? In Connecticut, on Tuesday, when the first recreational sale starts, there will be, as I said, I think seven of the stores are actually going to open. And I personally don't believe we're going to see the lines anything like we saw in Massachusetts. Well, it might be nice for my business. I think the reality is it's just not going to be the case because the demand has been proliferating. We have Rhode Island that is already approved and already operating. We've got all these stores in Massachusetts. We have our stores in Connecticut. And, you know, it's a process here, right? Someone, you guys will, even if you said yes tonight, right? You put your zoning rules in. It would take 30 days. Does someone appeal? Does somebody not? It takes time. And it will take time for operators to come on board, right? And so more of these medical facilities in the state will turn into recreational facilities, and that will dissipate the demand. And then new social equity operators and other operators in our equity joint ventures and lottery owners will continue to open up, which will, again, dissipate the demand. And so at the beginning, is there a reality of there could be traffic? Sure. But over the long term, you don't see any of the complaints about any traffic, even in the business stores in Massachusetts anymore, because the proliferation essentially dissipates. And, you know, and so, and then the other thing that we've seen in towns is, you know, because of COVID, I think we've become sort of normalized to this idea of online ordering and things. And so for our facilities, and I can't speak to anyone else, we do try and limit our, our orders by an appointment-only system. And so we can actually manage the flow of traffic until there's an understanding of what the reality is going to be. You know, for us, we operate on Martha's Vineyard, which is a unique sort of physical destination. And I always bring this up because in Martha's Vineyard, we were one of two stores for 150,000 people who come on during the height of the summer. And, you know, the worry was that everyone was going to be there. And so we operated for six, eight, nine months. We went back to our zoning board, and they said the impact of traffic was literally less than one-half of 1%, even during the summer months, on the impact of what they expect of the actual traffic study. And so we had a traffic study done before of what their expectation was, and after of the reality, and everything went back. And so I can only speak to our personalized experiences, but, you know, I think that everyone has a fear of the unknown. And then once we sort of dive into these things of the known, it's generally less of an impact than people worry about, right? Because we worry about what we don't know. We, and then we see realities. And then there's a, so those are sort of the three main things. The other things that I would just note, sorry if I'm going too long or going on the wrong topic. I apologize. But is, you know, the data from all over the country very specifically notes that crime in the areas around dispensaries goes down. It has been clear in every state we legalized cannabis that, by and large, and I wish I had a study to note it, but because these facilities are so safe in the, because these facilities are so secure in the neighborhoods right around dispensaries, crime goes down. And why is that? Because we are held to this different level of standard. For us to be able to have the opportunity to exist in our towns, in our new states, we have to take our security and care incredibly closely. That's why we always have to send our security plans directly to chiefs of police. That's why we always have walkthroughs with local law enforcement. That's why we engage the towns and municipalities and law enforcement in the process from day one. And, you know, I can luckily say that in the state of Connecticut, I think there was one attempted break-in into a dispensary one time. And other than that, in the seven years that these 18 to 22 businesses with the producers have been operating, there's not been any sort of crime-related issue at any facility. And, you know, I think that that's something that as an industry, we can be incredibly proud of because, you know, while we are held to a standard that may be above and beyond, it forces us to put our best foot forward and work in the right way. And any operator who would come to this town, I think, would have to be representative and held to that standard, both by the town as well as by the Department of Consumer Protection. So that's my spiel, I guess.
Thank you, Benjamin.
Yeah.
Let's let Kristen.
We just asked him a question?
I'll take questions now so I can watch the UConn game at 8:30.
Number of employees you have? Since it sounds like quite an involved process.
Yeah. So, so as a medical, so as an adult-use dispensary, we generally are, we're looking at employing like 35 to 40 people in our first stores. In our stores that come later, we plan to have about 20. In our Massachusetts stores right now, we have seven people there in the winter in Martha's Vineyard, and then we have 15 in the summer. So Connecticut, like in these first openings, we're going to have about 35 to 40, depending on each facility. And, you know, our next store, which will be opening in Manchester, we're only hiring 28 to 30, to 30. And then that's generally broken up into two shifts. And so there would generally be anywhere from 12 to 15 people in a facility at most. And I think that number continues to dwindle over time. So, you know, we create a number of jobs, and then as each facility, those number of jobs per facility goes down.
Just one additional point. It's, I'm almost seeing a blur when I try to think of all the different licenses that are now provided by the state of Connecticut or allowed.
Same.
Your company, could you tell us what areas you're in? Are you growing?
Sure. Sure. So as of today in Connecticut, as of literally this moment today, we operate three medical dispensaries. So we have only been able to sell medical up until, and on Tuesday, that will technically change, where we will be a hybrid facility. So that we will be able to have our medical line and our medical registers, as well as recreational customers in the same facility. Next, our facility that will be opening in Manchester will be an adult-use retail-only facility. So that will be no medical and retail. Additionally, Fine Federal, we have five more of those available retail licenses that we can put across the state, 20 miles from each other. Just hard, 20 miles in Connecticut goes a very, very long way. And we also recently, with our partners, were awarded one of those DIA disproportionate impact area cultivation licenses. And we have a zoning meeting in Bloomfield in January. Supposed to be in December, but their Zoom went down on the Wetlands meeting, so we got pushed to January. But we would be cultivating in Bloomfield if, if awarded and once we built.
And that's a very large indoor structure.
Yeah. So that would be.
How many square feet?
That would be an indoor structure. Our planned facility is about 46,000 square feet.
46,000.
Yeah. Big. Expensive. Very expensive.
Well, yeah, since you can't show your product, do you do that by internet or how do yours?
Yeah. So it's, it's a little bit wonky, but we have an online menu, which we, and Connecticut has quite restrictive rules about what we can say about our products in the online menu. But the producers, they send us very pretty photos that we upload into our online space, and we have descriptors. And based on the strain and the various levels of cannabinoids and the terpene profiles, which are sort of like the smells to the plant and the oils, we have descriptors of all of the products in our menu on our website. And then we break down our menus based on the medical menu and the adult-use menu. Because in Connecticut, there is a potency limit to a lot of the products available for adult use. So in an adult-use-only facility, only a subset of the products are available for sale. And we give all that information out on our site, as do all the other operators in the state.
So is your medical product different than your recreational product?
No. Yes and no. So the products are, the way I sort of describe it, and my team has heard me say this a lot, is every square is a rectangle, but every rectangle is not a square. So all products based on potency are allowed to be sold to the medical customer. Right? So everything to the medical is a rectangle, but only some of them can be sold to the adult use. So if it's edible more than five milligrams, if it's flour more than 30% THC, if it's a concentrate above 60%, those products are, are able to be sold to our medical patients, but they are not able to be sold to our adult-use patients. I hope that analogy made any sense.
Thank you.
I don't know about questions, but you've been extremely thorough. I really, very helpful. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I'm sorry all at once, I guess.
No, this is very helpful.
I can have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I think there's probably a curiosity on a lot of people's part. What does a recreational store look like? So I'm going to walk by it. Are you going to have big signs of, are you have last storefront?
Sure. No, that's a great question. So in Connecticut, first, the windows must be fully opaque. Fully opaque. So we, we frost all of our windows. You cannot see inside any part of our facility, even the waiting room where no product would ever be. So that's the windows. Signage, the laws allowed by the state have changed around signage. So up until about four months ago, our signage had to be restricted to an 18-by-16-inch sign on your door of just your logo. And then you could be on the shopping center's pylon sign, essentially. As of today, signage is allowed within the town's zoning and, I guess, or signs zoning or building permits, but within the zoning. So a sign can be defined as what is allowed within the zoning, within the zoning use. And however, the only thing that's allowed on a sign per RARCA, which is the recreational cannabis law, is you can only have your name and your logo. It can be any size that's allowed, again, on the building or in zoning. You cannot have any, like marijuana pot, plant leaves. You can't have anything that depicts the use. You can't have anything. And your sign needs to be held to the three, to three colors. So if your logo was four colors, better change your logo for your sign because that wouldn't be approved by the Department of Consumer Protection. You also can't say or write anything about the product. So you can, so like for us, and also, if you're not a hybrid facility or a medical facility, you can't actually use the word dispensary in Connecticut. So our legal DBA, like our legal DBA was Fine Federal Dispensary. But for our facility in Manchester, we actually had to remove the word dispensary from our logo because it wasn't able to be used on the state level. So the town of Manchester would have allowed it, but the state wouldn't. And so now it just says Fine Federal. So, but signage is up to the, up to the town. In Stamford, we're not allowed to have any sign bigger than the 18. In Stamford, we're not allowed to have any sign bigger than the 18 by 16 still. In our other towns, they changed the rules to follow the state rule. So in some of those towns, we have a little bit bigger sign that's based on what's on our building.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Yes. Kristen. Kristen Sangarow is the general manager of Charlie.
Hi. So yes, I am the director of operations at the facility right down the street. We're at number 34 Hot Meadow. Most people don't know we're there, which is a good thing. We keep to ourselves. We do not have a lot of signage. A lot of what goes on at our facility is similar to what Ben just described in terms of security, in terms of how the product is handled, how people get in and out of the building and in and out of different rooms. So we have a very, we have a very, we follow a similar set of regulations that our retail dispensaries follow. We've operated out of that facility for the last three years since 2019. Previously, we were located on Grist Mill. And we moved to this larger facility, which was the previously the Northeast, Northeast Utilities Building for many, many years. So some of you might know that. We have about 60,000 square feet in our building in total, of which about 12,000 of that is our cultivation grow canopy. So although we grow in about 20,000 square feet in total, we count the canopy, meaning the actual space in which there is plants that are growing, is about 12,000 square feet of that. There's four producers in the state, as Ben mentioned, of which we are one currently. We are the smallest of the three, which is kind of ironic because Curaleaf is the largest cannabis company in the world right now. We operate out of 23 states right now. And Connecticut, again, is one of their smaller operations. So we're, we're selling to, there's a total of 18 dispensaries within Connecticut right now, four of which are owned by Curaleaf. So we are going into the adult-use market as retail partners as well as the grow facility. At this time, it is important to note that, I know that many of you probably know that we had, were part of a, a meeting last year where we were looking to do a large expansion to our building. And at this point, that is not, no longer on the table in terms of how we're preparing for the recreational market. We're simply, we are going to be proposing a renovation, which is actually with the building committee right now, but it is internal to our facility as it stands. So we're going to be changing some walls and things like that. But we don't anticipate having any additional footprint other than what we have right now. We're definitely interested in, in waiting to see what the market does. Again, not to echo Ben too much, but there's a lot of unknowns within the state. There's a lot of unknowns in the state right now in terms of what the market will actually do. We're surrounded by much larger states who already have an adult-use program. We do expect to fully support the medical patients within the state. And that is a priority for all of the producers as we enter into a hybrid model as well. The other issue that I will just bring up, and then again, I'll just take questions only because I think he, he covered a lot of it, but the facility smell is also a concern for people when, when you think about cannabis in general, and our facility is no different. I've been with Curaleaf for just over two years at this point, which some would say is 10 years in the cannabis industry, but, but I've not had one complaint. And we do have a large condo complex right next to us. So we have the same mitigation that Ben described in terms of our HVAC systems and filtration systems to ensure that that doesn't make its way out beyond, you know, the small area that we occupy currently. So I do think that's important to note that we haven't heard from that facility in terms of complaints.
Do we have questions for Kristen? Just a heads up for you, the attorney who represents the condo complex next door, or their apartments, really, she, she would disagree with your assertion. There are no problems, no complaints.
Yeah, it's interesting. I'm aware of those comments. I just saw them tonight. I've not, they've not spoken to myself.
She's been here and offered the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why, we've never spoken to them before.
I'm not trying to referee this. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
They don't have the same view, but anyway, okay. But let me just ask you this. The, the rules that, then procedures for security-related issues as your, our previous speaker, are, are, is there a state code that you're complying with or does each company make up their own?
No, there, there is absolutely a state code that we follow. The state code, our governing body in the state of Connecticut is the Department of Consumer Protection. And so they, along with the legislation that was passed last year, are who governs all of our programs. So within that regulation, within the regulations, there's a specific portion that's relative to retail sites. And then there's a specific portion relative to manufacturing sites. Curaleaf itself and my facility does have a security, full-time security presence in addition to all the cameras that Ben described, but as well as Curaleaf nationally has a whole security team. So we, we do take that very seriously. But yes, we follow the regulations. I mean, and they are extremely, extremely strict, as he alluded to, so.
Have you been with Curaleaf in other states?
I've visited other states. I've only actually worked for them in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anne?
No.
Diane? Oh, no alphabetical. Kevin?
No.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate your coming out and telling us your experience. We will continue the public hearing. And does anyone wish to speak? This is.
I see.
You may.
Joan Coe, 26 Woodbury Drive. I am hence increasing the distribution and sale of cannabis marijuana in Simsbury. With an increase of recreational cannabis marijuana in many forms, so is the availability of the cannabis marijuana in the home with children consuming the substance, leading to hospitalization and health and death. A study released in the journal Pediatrics found that in 2017, there were just over 200 reported cases of accidental consumption of cannabis edibles by children under six. In 2021, the number shot up to 3,054, an increase of 1,375%. Federally insured banks will not accept money from cannabis marijuana establishments. And since the banks issue credit cards, the business cannot accept credit transactions. As a cash business, there are large amounts of cash on site, a perfect place for robberies. The criminal element with guns will come to Simsbury as a perfect business to steal large amounts of cash. The cannabis marijuana business will have armed security in place to secure their activities. Public safety could be in jeopardy. David Murray from the Hudson Institute wrote, "The Colorado Experiment Legalized Marijuana Has Impacted Colorado," quote, "Not only did the promise benefit, both benefit, both financial and on behalf of public safety not come to pass, but in multiple areas of daily life, the metrics were worsened." Moreover, the data from Colorado have been accompanied by several years of gradimatic medical science awareness of the health risk of marijuana exposure. Easiest access, greater prevalence, higher psychotic potency from increased THC and a continued criminal element, and more intensive daily use has all occurred since the experiment began," end quote. Venture capital is promoting the increase of sale in cannabis marijuana. Heart recurrent, quote, "Connecticut's venture capital funds is among the first institutional investors to jump into the growing cannabis business, committing 1.25 million to a manufacturer of edibles intended to enhance energy focus and mental health." Curaleaf LLC located in Simsbury at 34 Hot Meadow Street, headquartered in Wakefield, Massachusetts. Curaleaf has a presence of 21 states and owns and operates 144 dispensaries and 29 cultivation sites with a focus on highly populated states, including Arizona, Florida, Illinois, Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. It is alleged that Curaleaf has many security cameras and armed guards on site. Millions of dollars in lobbying efforts by venture capitalists will corrupt the system. According to the CDC, using marijuana can lead to numerous adverse effects. Marijuana significantly affects an individual's cognitive ability, leading to poor memory and decision-making, loss of coordination, difficulty learning, impaired cognition can lead to participation in risky behavior and poor life choices that can have serious consequences. Marijuana leads to negative effects on major organs such as heart and lungs, and it causes rapid heart rates, increased blood pressure, and lung tissue. The substance increases the risk for the development of heart disease and strokes. Cannabis hikamesis syndrome is a condition of severe nausea, vomiting following marijuana use, which can cause abdominal pain, dehydration, esophagus inflammation, or perforation, poor nutrition, and tooth breakdown. Using recreational marijuana can also lead to psychological effects. The CDC describes the correlation between marijuana and mental illness, including depression and anxiety. There can be both short-term effects, such as altered perceptions of reality and paranoid thoughts on long-term complications. Most alarming finding the side effects is that suicide thoughts and attempts have been related to marijuana use. Marijuana is a mind-altering drug, causing serious mental health issues that will cause pain and suffering for years to come. Andrew Glassman, chair of Pullman Conley, Conley's Cannabis CVD and Hemp Practice, spoke to Fox 61 Morning News about new business opportunities and workplace policies on the first day of the legislation of recreational marijuana in Connecticut. Andrew Glassman is the husband of Mary Glassman. Lawyers and venture capitalists should not set the public policy for Simsbury. What is the position of the Board of Education, Police Department, the Social Services on the issue? I am asking the zoning commission not to kick the cuff, can down the road. It is all about courage to say no to the sale and distribution of cannabis marijuana, as many other towns have done. The zoning commission should follow the lead of the other towns, including Avon, and include a ban on the sale of marijuana, cannabis marijuana in Simsbury. The increased distribution, sale, and use of cannabis marijuana in Simsbury should be banned by the zoning commission. It is time to vote on the issue with all the members on record with their vote. And all of my comments, we post on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Anyone else? Yes. Yeah?
Do I say my name and?
Addres.
Okay. Jennifer Golick, 7 Chestnut Hill Road.
Thank you.
Drugs ruin lives. Over and over again, drugs ruin lives. If we allow recreational cannabis shops in Simsbury, there will be carnage. And the blood will be on our hands. Let's not be responsible for one single loss of life. We don't need the tax money. We don't need a few extra jobs. We've survived before, we can survive without it. Let us do what is right. No cannabis retail stores in Simsbury. Oh, and one more thing. It's not going to be clean-cut young, young executives going to these retail stores. I encourage you to go buy stores that exist already in neighboring states. There are loiterers, there are panhandlers, there are stoners asking for a buck or two so they can go in and make their purchase. And if you look around where those stores are, a lot of retail stores have gone out of business because they don't want to be situated next to these places. So in the end, you lose tax money. So let's say no to cannabis retail stores in Simsbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. You say your name and address.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Serta, and I am a Hartford resident and president of Shangri-La CT, a new and prospective cannabis business in Connecticut. I am here today with one of my partners, Harrison, who is also, who is a longtime resident of Simsbury. We are here today, and I prepared something that I'll be reading. We are here today because we would like to operate a cannabis retail store in the town of Simsbury. We have prepared an FAQ that Harrison is passing around currently that addresses some concerns voiced by the community during previous planning and zoning meetings. Naturally, there is fear of the unknown with the legal cannabis market. What does it look like to have legal cannabis operations in our towns? It looks like job creation, which is imperative, especially post-pandemic. Because this is a new industry that is rich in its history and is heavily science-based, it will create new educational opportunities. The taxes will help to improve and uplift communities where they need it most. It will provide healing and reduce the negative stigma for those who struggle with chronic illness and those looking for a healthier way to unwind after a long day. By working together with residents, local stakeholders, and local government, we will successfully operate a cannabis business that not only stimulates the local economy, but will also improve roads, schools, parks, and will also help offer a host of services in this town. By working together, we will all be able to create a thriving, safe, and responsible legal cannabis market. I want to thank you for your time and for sharing space with us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? Sure.
My name is Stephanie Ma with Hacid and George. I'm here on behalf of Curaleaf. I'm just here, I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that was submitted by Attorney Pearson on behalf of the condo complex that she submitted earlier today. Our concern is that Curaleaf continue to operate under their new license. As you know, the state has changed the license to a hybrid license, so they can do both medicinal and adult use. The license might have changed, but the operations at Curaleaf have not. Looking out from the outside, you won't notice any difference. So that's why Kristen was testifying that there's really not going to be any change. So while Attorney Pearson raised some concerns that, that there's no special exception process, there's really no need for a special exception process because Curaleaf already went through that process the first time around. There's no change in what they're going to be doing. You wouldn't ask a painting, a paint store to say, we're doing a different color paint, now you need a new special exception. So they're not doing anything different in their production. So that's, there's a misunderstanding there. But also Attorney Pearson was also concerned about potential expansion. And as Kristen testified, there's no, any plans to expand is on hold. But I might also note that any expansion has actually already been approved about a year ago. They went through the process to get that, that if they wanted to expand, they could. So that's already actually not even really relevant at this point. But ultimately, Curaleaf just wants to continue to operate as they have and so that they're able to operate for the state's benefit at this time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Sorry, just to clarify.
So just to confirm, you don't have any requests before the town at this time, correct, either to this board or any other board? Or rather you, but.
We did submit a letter, I think as part of the record on October, that if there was any clarification to the text amendments, those were our requests. But ultimately, Curaleaf just wants to operate as is, without having to go through another process to do the exact same thing.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Remind the commission that we do not want dialogues between the people who are testifying and the commission. Thank you.
Hey, doing good. Vincenzo Infante, owner of Lyons and Coffee Shop, 712 Hot Meadow Street. I'm going to talk real briefly, based on my last, I guess it was like past life, as a retired police officer, on this topic real briefly. I think I probably have pretty good grasp on the situation. So I retired last year, actually one year to the day, from the city of Bristol. Now, the city of Bristol is actually one of the first few places in the state to authorize medical dispensaries. Since opening that medical dispensary, we actually saw a decrease in marijuana sales in the illegal drug trade on that. We also saw a lot less crime in those areas of drug trade. And the impact of marijuana has a far less impact, again, this is based on my personal observations as a law enforcement officer for 10 years, than alcohol has and does on a regular basis. I dealt daily with alcoholics committing crimes, breaking into places, just to go steal cans, bottles, to get their next liter of vodka, on a daily basis. Didn't deal with that with marijuana when it was illegal and then became legal on the medical side. And I don't think it's going to drastically change much when it becomes recreational. It's probably actually going to be better, better regulated, because things won't be laced with harmful things. That's when we saw issues, when marijuana, marijuana was not properly regulated and laced with PCP or other narcotics that caused those mental illnesses that we saw all the time. So I do support them, also as another local business owner. Hiring people, probably good steady jobs as well, taxes for employees, for the city, for the state, all around.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sean Perez. I'm a retired officer with the Hartford Police Department. I just wanted to come and try to come and speak on it as well. In full agreement, when you legalize these things, you take away a lot of the criminal element. And we're talking about cannabis here, not like a methanol or anything like that. As far as people standing outside facilities, asking for a buck or two, this stuff's not cheap either, it's expensive. Anything you buy in a dispensary is expensive. You're not going to have criminals in there buying stuff. You're going to have patients or people who want clean product going in there. And I've dealt with people on different substances and, and, you know, your problems are PCP, heroin, cocaine, things like that. Those are your, your hard substances that, that are going to cause you problems. As far as I know, I've never had an issue with anybody who was using marijuana. In fact, I've had several instances where I've come across people, and I've felt more sentiment for them than other people in harder issues. I remember one time, we were doing an operation in Kenney Park, and I had to grab somebody who was leaving that park, you know? They called out to me. I was unit, I think 17 at the time. So I said, "Unit 17, hey, we got a car leaving the park, I want you to pull it over, stop it, and talk to the driver." We just picked something up from there. So I pulled him over, I had him get out, and it was this older gentleman, skins all gray, bald, had a feeding tube coming out from his stomach. Now, I knew right, right away what was going on. He had cancer, clearly. You know, he had gone to the park to go buy some cannabis to relieve his symptoms. Now, this hit me hard when I was an officer, because I am a survivor of cancer. Soon as I saw him, right away, same feeding tube, same spot in the stomach, everything. Like, like it broke my heart, you know, because I had to, more or less arrest this man, who was at the end of his life, and was just looking for relief. You know, it really, really hit me as an officer. So I just wanted to put that out there, let you guys know.
Thank you very much. Yes. Yankie Hall.
My name is Josiah Schleih. I live at 45 Bangs Road. I'm a lifelong Simsbury resident, and I've been a medical patient since 2016. And I've had the opportunity, I guess, to see dispensaries all over the country, in Oregon, California, Colorado, Nevada, you know, all over the place, and see what they're like. And Connecticut has done a very good job at keeping the dispensaries very discreet, not loud, like Colorado or something like that, where it's really in your face. And Connecticut's done a really good job keeping things discreet and safe. And, you know, dispensaries are like the safe place to be. If people want something, they're going to get it. If you think people aren't getting cannabis now, you're lying to yourself. They're getting it from Massachusetts, they're driving somewhere else, they're getting it from somebody else. So all this really is, is making it official to get it from somewhere that's safer, regulated, and taxed, and goes back into the town money, instead of the town missing out on all that. And it creates a regulated system for people to purchase it that's safer, where they're not around other things that they don't want to buy as well. So it creates a much safer environment. And one small thing I do want to touch on is that I don't believe cannabis is for everybody. You know, you have to be a certain age before your brain is developed enough that can affect you developing as a kid. That's true. I don't like it, the broad statement that it's for everybody all the time, fine. It's not. And some people have, you know, underlying mental illness, and cannabis isn't a good idea for them. You know, there's exceptions like that. But that's, you know, kind of the alcohol or whatever you put in your body, you have to be conscious of where you are with your mental health and how your state is. So I just think having dispensaries in Simsbury would be helpful for me, than I have to drive 30 minutes to Hartford all the time, to go into a very boring brick building. You know, there's not much to see, brick and blank paint walls, it's pretty boring. It's not like flashy neon signs and all this craziness that people probably imagine. It's probably as boring as you can imagine. So I think a lot of the fear, it makes sense, but it's just not, it's just not the case. So that's what I'd say. Thank you.
Do I want to say this week? Do I want to? Do I want to twice? Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any feeling about whether we should close this public hearing or not?
I'd like to see it closed, myself, but I don't know. I'm concerned that I don't want to compromise our ability to engage sometime when they're ready, I guess. We're waiting for the Board of Selectmen to decide if they want to consider the larger issue of cannabis and who should be regulating it, and whether we might want to delegate it to them. But I don't want to compromise that, but I, I do feel like, I know you, you asserted I'm wrong, but that we could close the meeting and continue our process. And if we come to a conclusion that is significantly different than what was in our text amendment that we've already posted, then we have an obligation to have another public hearing. But if we act on the one that's been circulated, we don't need another public hearing. And so I don't want to be dragged into sort of waiting indefinitely and having a small group of people come to every one of our meetings and speak. It's not that I'm not interested, but I don't think the process is enhanced much by, you know, as we have more speakers, we have less sort of memory clarity about the ones who came in the months before, for which our minutes don't provide any detail. So we have very little capability to review the record of the prior speakers that have taken the time to come and share.
Videos. But.
Right, we can go to SCTV and watch that.
I'm comfortable closing.
Anne?
I think at this point I am too. I, I think there's very little new information that's going to be brought out, and I think probably most people know that we, this has been happening, that we have these open audiences, and I think everybody who probably wants to speak has already spoken.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I, I think I'm ready. What, you know, the people that have attended may not have seen, but it is online, is the report from staff that talks about their research with police officers around in Massachusetts and that, you know, we should, I don't know if you want to address as a summary just for the public, or should we?
George, why don't you quickly summarize?
Sorry.
Sure, yeah, so.
It's a public document.
So, of course, yeah. So, again, the, the staff report dated January 4th, it's a staff memo, we make that part of the public record. I would mention two other things. We provided two additional letters. Again, Ms. Coe has spoken a couple times. We had a hard copy of that, and we sent it to you. And of course, we sent Ms. Pearson's letter that we received today. Again, all that we would make for the public record. You, you had asked staff to, to contact folks in the business, and so we brought them to you tonight. You also asked staff to, to reach out to, you know, fellow planners, fellow, fellow cities and towns in, in neighboring Massachusetts. And I did that, and those emails, I would make part of the public record. They are attached to the staff report. And I spoke with two police chiefs and six or seven planners. I did it via email, and I don't have anything particularly to report. They didn't identify particular issues in their community. And I think their, their emails back to me speak for themselves. So it, it does not appear from a, from a, from a land use perspective, which is obviously what my field is and what our field is, that no real impacts on, 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 on traffic, or noise, or any of those kinds of site impacts that, that are under the zoning commission's purview related to site plan. And so I would, I would make that part of the public record, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
And the other, the other document was from the Town Managers Association.
Oh, also included, where I think, one, one article on behalf of American Planning Association, and one on behalf of the International City County Managers Association, just, that had a number of case studies related to towns and how they dealt with cannabis, and those are, those are, those are in the record as well.
Yep. But, you know, I just wanted, you know, to address that, but no, I'm ready to close.
Diane?
Yeah, I think tonight's meeting, and all the information that George accumulated, which I very much appreciate, was very helpful.
It's all available to us in our deliberations.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I feel like that's rounded out everything, so I feel comfortable closing at this point.
Okay. Can we have a motion to close?
I move that we close the public hearing for application 22-32 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission.
Second. Anne? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Any abstain? Okay, 6-0. The public hearing is closed on application 22-32. Okay, the next order of business is application 22-36 of Lyons and Coffee LLC, owners Christine Rafferty.
And her husband ju- just spoke as well. So, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yep, sorry.
Vincenzo Infante, again, owner of Lyons and Coffee Shop.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I just?
Oh, sorry.
I'm not trying to interrupt you, but, so this is, this is a, an application that you don't normally get, so.
I'm sorry.
No, no, stay up, stay up, stay up. So, so the applicant, this is a property that is at 712 Hot Meadow, it's in the Fitzgerald Shopping Plaza. It is in your center zone, and typically, a center zone sign application would go to the design review board, and they make a recommend, a positive recommendation, and the applicant agrees with the recommendation and any conditions, staff would, would approve the sign application. So in this case, the applicant is, does not, does not completely agree with, with the conditions that the DRB placed on them, and therefore, it comes to you to review and make a decision. So with that.
Thank you. Do they have what I submitted by chance? Sorry, so they got visual, and they know?
Yep, I've got it. Yeah, hang on. Well, I, I've got a couple of my slides first, so if you just want to talk from what I've got, then I'll bring yours up.
All right, so this is imposed by SignPro. They're one of the largest East Coast sign and design companies, installation companies, that they designed. This is in keeping with our logo colors. So we have three colors. I spoke at the review board, the significant of each color and the design itself. It has a law enforcement meaning behind it. If you look at the lion, the gold shield, it is a badge to represent law enforcement, which I did for 10 years before retiring. And then I can go into further detail after. It's replacing Anna's kitchen right there. I also do want to just point out, if you look to the left, there is the TD Bank, just make note of that. And then if you are familiar, I did submit photos with this.
Yeah, I'll pull up, absolutely.
So the, the current ordinance is very narrow in its writing. I read the section a couple times, just so I make sure, I knew what I was talking about before approaching you. So the Hans nails and Bill's Jewelers, those are by the book, dimensional lettering, cream-colored background, and green.
I mean, two different programs, I apologize.
Okay. So. Where, tell me, where do you want me to go? Sorry, you could go on. I just wanted to point out some signs that were approved, that not, that were not in compliance with the ordinance, that were approved by the zoning board. So you have CVS Pharmacy, which does have the dark background and the white lettering. It does have the uplighting, like the ordinance says, but that's technically not in compliance, but is an approved sign. You have the TD Bank, which, again, is not in compliance, but it has that reverse lettering, the green and white, not in compliance. So precedent is starting to be set here, as far as what signs will and will be, not be approved. So far, we have larger corporations, and we also have the Chamber of Commerce. In clear violation, you have a dark background, you have white lettering, and you also have some blue in there, which is not in compliance with the ordinance. Again, approved signs and/or billboards, banners. The next two is just the Fitzgeralds. Webster Bank will be the next one, and Caldwell Banker, which are blue and yellow, and blue and white.
That's all I've got. That's the end.
Oh, that is, okay. Well, in that clause as well, you do Caldwell Banker and Webster Bank. So I'm just seeking your approval for my sign. It seems that precedent has been set by the board on these prior signs, that appear to be larger corporations, national change. As a small business, I'm trying to build a brand that people recognize, and the coloring is important. And so that's what I'm doing, is seeking your approval for the proposed sign that I have. Any questions?
So what did they want? They want, I'm sorry, you're already, but tell me again, they want you to have a white background with black lettering?
So they made, they made a recommendation for, do you mind going back to the proposed design that I had?
Of course.
Yeah, that one right there. So they wanted me to reverse it, but not with white, they wanted cream, as written in the ordinance, but cream has nothing to do with my coloring. And then they did allow the gold on that cream background with black lettering. If I had, I had to pay extra to have SignPro draw it up, and the design fee is an extra $200 for that. But to do what they want, it was also going to cost me more money to have that signed, designed, and made. And also, it, it doesn't go with our brand. All of our coloring is a black background with either white or black or gold. We made that change about it. We did have white, but then we got very negative feedback on, no one can make out our sign. So, because it was white on gold, and those two colors are very close in the color, so they don't really stand out.
Right. Our, our regulation actually calls for white background with colored letters, and the exceptions that you were talking about, all were done before that regulation went into place, so they're grandfathered. So we didn't approve them as exceptions. So we didn't set a precedent.
For which, I'm sorry?
For the, for the TD Bank and CVS, those were all done before the town center zone went into place.
The town center zone is. Um, if, I had, I had to pay extra to have Sign Pro draw it up, um, and the design fee is an extra two hundred dollars for that. But to do what they want, it was also going to cost me more money to have that signed, designed, and made. Um, and also it, it doesn't go with our brand. All of our coloring is a black background with either white or black or gold, um, we made that change about it. We did have white, but then we got very negative feedback on, no one can make out our sign. So, because it was white on gold, and those two colors are very close in the color, so they don't really stand out.
Right, our, our regulation actually calls for white background with colored letters, and the exceptions that you were talking about, all were done before that regulation went into place, so they're grandfathered.
Oh, thank you.
So we didn't approve them as exceptions, so we didn't set a precedent.
For which, I'm sorry?
For the, for the TD Bank and CVS, those were all done before the town center zone went into place.
The town center zone is currently written in the ordinance as the, I just want to make sure I understand it right, but I thought I read it, it's, uh, like ten parts white, one and a half parts ivory, with the green dimensional lettering, um, as it's currently writ, written in the most. So is there an updated version that I did not see?
He may be talking about the, kind of the approved common or unified sign plan for the Fitzgerald, uh, complex.
Yeah, so there's actually two pieces to the regulation, one is the common sign, the common, um, block, and the second is where we actually specify white background with, um, black letters, or black or dark green.
Okay, so, so what, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out which one we follow here. So I, I have a better understanding, because if there's now two, there's like the common one that's used in the plaza, the cream and the green. I understand that one, um, I, but that's also written in the ordinance.
That's, that's probably the more operative, if you think, I mean, the, 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 the white sign, uh, in these tenant spaces particularly have always been, with the exception of TD Bank, and I'll talk about that in a second, have always been this white with, uh, kind of varying font, but, but a, but a dark, but a, a black or a, a, a navy, um, writing or script.
And then, sorry, the Chamber of Commerce as well, with the black and the white in that plaza, and then Caldwell Banker and Webster Bank?
They're not part of the, the common signage, they're actually different properties.
Fitz, certainly Fitzgerald and CBS and, and Jersey Mike's are, and you allow kind of white channel letters on the, on the architecture. Again, different than the, different than the tenant space, and, and that's probably okay. Uh, TD Bank is the only one that we're, we're researching, exactly find an approval on TD Bank, we've been in contact with him about, um, about that.
Yeah, can you go back a little bit to where they actually had their logo in white?
There, which, there?
That was at the beginning of the presentation. No, it was before this.
We no longer have any logos for our brand.
Yeah, what was it?
Yeah, that was the, uh, very first submission for the first couple of months, and that's what got negative reviews and feedback from our customers.
You mean, the, the gold lion?
The gold lion.
That's good. Oh, here. I need more than one computer.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Is that what you're?
Well, it's not up there.
Yeah, you have to hit it.
Oh, why isn't it up there? Hmm. Hang on a sec.
Yeah.
A lot of programs coming.
So you have used this color before, or is this what you're going back for?
I used that for probably the first month or two, maybe three months, um, and then everything got switched to black background, uh, on gold, with the white lettering. Um, and that's our current logo, which also I'm hoping to hear back this month from the federal trademark, um, for our font and coloring. I'm just looking to, as a small business owner, I'm just looking to build my brand recognition, um, and bring a little bit of character, um, with my logo, which isn't overt with a thousand colors, it's very subtle, subtle, I guess you can say.
No, you, there's not a problem with the logo, you can use the.
No, no, I know the logo, yeah.
But it would be the white background with the dark letters, just to flip the colors.
Yeah.
And this is your second location, correct?
This is my second location, our first location is in, uh, Plansville, um, it's small, it's a subsection of Soullington, um, but it's a very small downtown area, less businesses than here, probably more historic-ish, so, um, and we do have a, same color scheme, um, just a different shaped logo, based on what Soullington zoning approves.
So they wouldn't let you have that shape?
Uh, that's not, that is not, I can show you the first shape, um, that we have, that's my primary go-to. Um, this is just to fit in compliance with the size of the sign that Simsbury requires for the commons. Um, that fits within the, the thirty inches by, I forgot the exact size.
So the common sign plan, these, these signs are all essentially the, the same size, I think they're two by fifteen.
I thought you were saying the logo itself is a different shape.
In, in Soullington, yes, the primary logo for all, if I open any future ones, is actually the shape of the shield, I can show you the logo if you, it's on my shirt, I can. Yeah, it's actually in the, in the shape of a shield, uh, itself, and then in that shield is encompassed the Lyons Den Coffee, um, with the lion. Uh, again, the shield is black, and then gold and white.
We recently had another application that asked for the same kind of exceptions, and we turned that one down.
I'm sorry?
We, we turned that one down as well, so the precedent is to stick with the, the ordinance, the way it's written.
For small businesses or nationally, that's why I'm just, I'm just trying to, because also.
It's the regulation, it doesn't, it doesn't matter who you are, the regulation says white.
Yeah, I understand where, but you, I mean, you go down Simsbury Center and there's various signs everywhere. I mean, Starbucks is right up the road, and they have their iconic, which I guess you can argue kind of might fit. Um, there's also table two seventy or three seventy or something, which is, again, Simsbury's.
They're not in the zone.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought it was right on.
No, but that's exactly the point, in this location, this is where the signs.
Look, I mean, I'm just going off.
No, but you're right.
Is the Chamber of Commerce approved?
It's a public hearing.
Sorry?
No, it's not.
Okay.
No, it's, it's.
No, it's an application.
It's an application, I'm sorry. Well, the question is whether we, whether we just, we should, as a commission, stick with what we have set up as a unified sign plan? If we were to vote, vote for this application, it would be contrary to our regulation. Is that correct?
That's right.
But, let me ask you this.
Yes.
I, I got the impression that the, who is it, that the landlord has not approved, was there a delay?
Uh, there's nothing in the, so there's, the review board asked that I get landlord approval, um, but there's nothing per contract in my section of the contract.
Well, I'm not concerned about, so much concerned about your contract.
Yeah.
Our, I think our, you're looking for basically approval for this thing, and I don't know that our submission to the planning office requires for a tenant to have some evidence of approval by their building owner.
So our, so interestingly, yes, our, our sign.
Did your building owner, did you approach the building owner about this, and your decision that you weren't?
I did not, because it's not per, part of the contract, that, to get landlord's approval.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I, yeah, no, I just go.
I got it.
Yeah, I mean, I try not to bother landlord with tedious stuff that's.
The only conflicts, how outraged they were when we rejected their plans for a new street sign that had all the names of the businesses, they were outraged. I felt bad for them because the owner made a very substantial contribution to our Veterans Memorial that's across the street, out here, when we were building it in twenty sixteen through twenty fourteen, in that area raising money. So, they, they're committed to the town, and they're committed to what we're trying to do here, because they know it's good for everybody.
And I'm trying to commit to this town as well.
When it affected what they wanted to do, but their sign, and it's a multi-tenant, it's out there, and, you know, you read it when you drive by, it conforms with the regulations, that you don't want to conform with.
I guess you could say I don't, but I also want to make, you know, I, I looked around in the plaza and, you know.
Logic doesn't count sometimes.
It's, I'm just trying to add my, my little bit of character to the town center, uh, and, and make it appealing to people, you know, because the signs in some plazas, you don't even know what businesses is there, because it's all the same color. You know, how, how do you know whose business is what, when a lot of small businesses work hard day and night for their brand, and they can't even represent their colors that they worked hard for? Um, that's, that is.
Right, but we hope they, they're informed of that, or, or seasoned enough to ask about it when they assign the lease. But they're not free to have any sign coloring, shape, any size, that might occur to them to be in their business. It doesn't work like that.
And that's why I did, I mean, I did, that's why I did my research with the ordinance, and then with, you know, getting approval from the town, I understand that's the only stipulation in my contract, so I go based on the contract, precedent settings, things, and, you know, the laws are written.
Thank you.
I think we understand the issue, and I think the sense of the commission is, I think, clear, I don't know, what do you think, Donna?
Yeah, I think we understand the issue, but I'm not sure that we can assist.
That what?
That we can assist. I think that we have established guidelines, that, uh, we've helped to.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the.
I, I would agree with what Donna just said.
And we're basically saying that we're unlikely to vote against our regulations.
Can I, I, for the, so TD Bank, you don't know if it was approved, because at the review board, they said it wasn't approved, and then was the Chamber of Commerce approved, I don't know if you can answer that, for their design? Yeah, I know it's, but it's in that plaza, you look at that plaza, it's right there. I'm just, which ones get approved, which ones don't, trying to think of the.
I'm afraid that we can, we've got a motion before, I think we should, the motion.
Like, can I ask, staff, can, can you read the, the paragraph in the, in the town center zone as far as the allowed background? I'm not sure cream is, is allowed. It's six eleven.
It's, um, it's like six dot.
Well, I read it, I, I have my computer to bring. Section six eleven.
Section, uh, page six eleven, you mean?
Section, section six.
No, it's not, it only goes, we only go up to six dot six, in the center zone.
In the center zone?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, at least, yeah.
Well, then you have to look at the.
Yeah, see, I, I, my recollection of reading of this is that the common sign plan is, is, is what guides us on this case, and any particular design guidelines. You know, they talk about letter, location, style, and materials. Um, so, so it's, yeah, it's, it's six dot, I'll read the cell, six dot four dot four. Background shall be white or off-white. Okay, off-white. Uh, border and font color shall be dark green, maroon, or black, except, except with the permission of the zoning commission. So you may accept it, um, as, as, as part of this process, so that's, that's the answer, yeah.
Well, we could also initiate a text amendment that would allow anybody to bring in any sign they want to, and we'd be compelled to approve it. I'm not in favor of doing that. So, I think that we should fashion a motion that presents in a positive tone and outcome, approval of the black sign, that, you know, you can refer to the page in the application, this is the sign he wants.
Well, there's a motion recommended.
A motion that does the cream color.
Well, I, I was suggesting stopping short of telling them what the answer is. What we're saying is this sign, the one that he wants, is not compliant, and we're not going to approve it.
We've, the recommended, recommended motion.
Yeah.
Is to approve his application, which would be a dark background.
Well, the motion we have here is actually, is to do a cream color background.
The, the motion we, the motion we carried forward as an affirmative is the motion from the design review board, which includes their conditions.
Oh, okay.
That's what the draft motion you have.
We don't need that.
But that, that allows them to move ahead.
Now, when, what our, our regulations says that zoning commission can vote to be different from that.
You can, you, you may, oh, yes, you may.
Only in the background, or for the whole set?
No, I think you could, you could approve an alternative sign, correct?
We could approve an alternative sign within the regulation as it stands.
Yeah, you may.
Yeah, but then you also have the uniform sign reg, which says that within a common thing, they should be the same.
So, he has a point, we have two different regulations that are governing this decision, but we're looking at the, the one specific related to the plaza, to the building versus the common sign.
Well, the common sign was white with black, or, yeah.
So they both say the same thing?
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it seems to me that what we see across the Fitzgerald Plaza is, is not conforming, uh, to this uniform sign plan, which we made for the monument sign.
No, it was already in effect before the monument sign.
But, and as, you know, if TD, if a new tenant was in the TD, we would have them comply with, with the, um.
But we have the option to.
Right.
To vote against that as part of the center zone.
Right, the colors, but not the uniform sign reg.
So we have a conflict in our own regulations.
Well, you could use the exception if it were a, a single site. So if you were off-site, you, you weren't subject to the uniform sign reg, you could have a different colored background. If we, if the zoning, if the zoning commission approved.
If the zoning commission.
Design review can't approve it, but we could.
Okay.
With the sign plan, I would offer the reminder, the uniform sign plan is only required in buildings with tenants of some specific, number five tenants or more, some point. They're supposed to have a plan for them, and we had, we've had go-rounds, especially with these guys, over the time that requirement has been in place, that says, no sign shall be approved that don't comply after the date these regulations become effective. But, yeah, they, for years, I don't know, do they, they, they do have a sign plan for their complex now. I mean, it's recent, I guess, I can read.
Yeah, so ma- 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 maybe if I may, um, you know, at, at the risk of delaying the applicant, but, you know, perhaps we bring back at, at your eighteenth meeting, the, the full unified sign plan that we have on file, and then we can take a look at that and, and see how specific it actually is, if, if you're interested in doing that.
What, what does it take to modify the unified, unified sign plan?
You need to get the building owner to enlist and.
Yeah, I think, for one, you need, you need the building owner as the applicant to start with, and, um, I suspect that's, that's a process that comes before this, you know, design review board, and then to the zoning commission for approval.
We never saw the sign plan for this complex. We never saw the sign plan for this complex.
It was, it may have been approved decades ago.
No. It wasn't decades ago, but it wasn't here, it's, I don't think it's required myself.
Yeah, it is.
I don't, I don't ever remember seeing one of the point sign plan for Fitzgerald Plaza. I don't know where it came from, I know it exists, but it's the owner's responsibility to create it, never created consistent with the regulation. Well, if it's the owner's responsibility to create the uniform sign plan, then perhaps we go back to the owner and get his unified.
That's what I was asking about, the owner's involvement here, and he's had none.
I can't speak on behalf of the owner, I just go based off what we agreed upon in the contract. Yeah, so if, I mean, that should have been divulged in the contract when we signed and agreed upon that, if that's the.
It's up to you and your lawyer, we're just a zoning commission.
No, I understand, that's kind of separate, not involving you, so for the.
When are you guys looking to open?
Uh, there's been a delay with the landlord in, on the storefront, so we're looking hopefully within the next seven to ten days. Fourteen, fourteen days at most, so.
Well, if we approve the cream color background and white, black lettering, would you be able to move forward with your opening?
The cream with white?
What was recommended by design review.
But he hasn't accepted that.
I know, I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
My honest opinion? Honestly, I wouldn't like that, I mean, that's not the sign I would like, representing my brand, um. That's my personal opinion.
But that would give you approval versus no approval. Which would you prefer us to do?
Can he put up a temporary sign? Put up a temporary sign, and we'll discuss this with the landlord.
Yeah, that sign is gonna have to.
Then be approved again.
You know, if it's, if, if the design is different than, than what's being approved, you know, that was, what was approved by, or recommended by the design review board, it would need to come here for, back to the design review board for review.
I think they're saying until you speak with the owner, we will allow him to open his business in seven to ten days with a sign.
I think this, this body needs to, to approve that form.
I'm talking to George.
So, yeah, so there are options, so, so I would, you know, there are potential options that we can meet with, with, with the applicant to see if there are some, some temporary measures.
Table this application, we're gonna meet again in two weeks. What's gonna be different in two weeks, though? Well, I'm not clear on it, I'm not opposed to it necessarily, but I'm not clear, why would we do that? They've submitted an application, they want an up or down vote, they, the owner.
I tend to agree, I mean, we're just holding it up at this point.
Yeah, I mean, and then you can make other plans, I would, I'm not interested, I mean, this is just me, I'm only one of six people, but I'm not, I don't have any interest in approving a sign that's not consistent with the zoning regulations.
Yeah, what if we just make the motion the way we have this, and then we can vote up or down?
Okay.
Right, so, you know, I will move that we approve twenty-two, application twenty-two dash thirty-six of Lyons Den Coffee for a sign permit for the installation of a plus or minus thirty-four, thirty square foot wall sign at seven twelve Hot Meadow Street. Based upon finding that the sign meets the section nine of the zoning regulations and subject to the following conditions, the applicant shall revise the sign design submitted in the application package such that the background is a cream colored back, is a cream colored background with black lettering and one gold accent color for the shield. A one and a quarter black border may also be permitted. Prior to issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall submit written approval of the sign design from the owner, and administrative zoning permit is required.
Do we want to say cream or white? Cream is, does it have to be cream?
Off-white.
But white is also a option.
White is an option.
White slash cream.
Right, but then we're substituting our decision for the DRB folks, who's Gabbineston.
All right, well, we can say white or off-white, because that's what the regulation calls for.
Okay, someone second?
I'll second it.
Second by Diane, further discussion? I'm willing to vote on this, but I would prefer we're voting up or down on the black sign. Black sign is what he wants, the black sign is what he submitted for. I don't, I don't know that he signed off on this other thing that we're about to vote on, did he ever say he would accept it? So why should we vote that he has to do it? We should just vote no on the black sign, which is what he wants.
All right, well, that's the way the motion is, you can either vote yes or no.
Okay. Well, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three? Four?
At the risk of being misunderstood, I'm voting no on this, this motion.
All right, any noes or groups? You know, all the others are voting for this, and no abstentions. Okay, then, motion passes four to one.
Five to one, five to one.
No abstentions, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next application is twenty-two forty-one. Florentino Sign Group, where freestanding sign replaced sign, freestanding sign replaced an existing sign at St. John's Place.
Hi, good evening, I'm Alison Ibbotson with Florentino Sign Group at One Trumco Drive, Terryville. The, the signposts are there, it's replacing an existing sign, same size. And the second sign. Is a wall plaque at the entrance.
Your, your design review board recommended approval of the two signs this evening.
Okay, because the package had more signs than that, right?
Did, did, it did, it did, and the applicant had originally submitted a full sign package that actually had two additional wall signs, but those exceeded the sign, the wall sign permission. So what is on the table tonight is the freestanding sign and this small two-by-two wall plaque.
It's a stupid question, but you are no longer educational fair care, assuming this is educational fair cares location?
That is correct.
It is.
Yeah.
But you're a different business, is that what you just said?
They bought them.
Oh, okay.
A couple of years ago.
Okay, are you ready to vote on this one? I don't think this one's. No, this one's not as complicated, but let me just ask this, I look at the draft motion, I don't, does that really speak to two signs, approving two signs?
I, I included the, both the freestanding and the, the wall plaque in, in the approval, yes.
So for freestanding and wall sign, the wall sign, it's good to be precise. Okay, someone, I want to make the.
Yeah, I'll move to approve application twenty-two forty-one for a sign permit for a freestanding sign and wall sign at one St. John's Place. Based upon a finding that the sign meets the section six, section nine, sorry, of the zoning regulations and subject to the following conditions, the sign shall be substantially in conformance with the plan submitted by the Twilight Signs dated September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, plus or minus twenty-eight square feet, freestanding sign, and January third, twenty twenty-three of a four, of plus or minus four foot square wall plaque. Administrative zoning permit is required for sign installation.
I'm gonna say. Second by Diane, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Repose, and abstain. Very six-nothing, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Okay, the next ordered business is old business twenty-two dash thirty-two. The Simmsberry Zoning Commission, this is for our candidates. Do we, uh, continue this, or do we want to just take this?
I don't think we, we have more meeting to kind of discuss this, and, well, I don't know if I'm prepared to.
So let's, let's.
Yeah, if we can table it.
Move to table this.
Yeah, I would recommend you forward it to your January eighteenth meeting.
Well, can we take a moment on ensuring we're on the same wavelength with the Board of Selectmen? Could you describe what the vision is of some sort of joint engagement with the Board of Selectmen? Or I. Board of Selectmen has the ability to vote no.
Yeah, can I describe?
Have cannabis in Simmsbury.
Yeah.
That's it. I know, but the Board of Selectmen has announced to the public, Wendy did, that we would be working in collaboration with the Board of Selectmen. And I'm not sure there's any collaboration in the future, and that's what I want to be clear about. Well, the collaboration, as people have been talking, but we are an elected board, we have to act according to the statutes that we are enabled to act on. The Board of Selectmen has the option to prohibit cannabis. So they, they're gonna do nothing until we take action, is that a fact? They can prohibit cannabis at any time.
Or they can take no action.
Or they can take no action. Or it can go to referendum, someone could, someone could get the. Well, we're gonna get to the end of our. And even if we, even if we had a regulation in place.
Yeah.
Referendum could say, okay, you can't do that anymore. But I think if we were to approve a site, that approval would stand.
Right.
If they're, if we act before they do. And somebody gets an application and it gets approved. Okay, I got that part. I, I, I'm not disputing the range of opportunity that's available, I'm just trying to be sure that we're all on the same wavelength, that there's been an announcement through the Board of Selectmen that they're gonna be involving us in a collaborative effort. I'm fine if that's not the case, then I think we just should know that, that's not what's been communicated to the public. And if you don't know what the Board of Selectmen are doing, just say so, it's okay with me. If we have no intention of engaging with the Board of Selectmen as an initiative of our own, that's okay too. I just think we should be clear. We are separate, we're elected, separate.
Then there are three of them are here today.
Our legislators know that.
Yeah, they left already.
Our legislators know that, they're not particularly concerned about it. In any event, if we table it, we'll have the opportunity to discuss that further. With the Board of Selectmen or with ourselves? With ourselves. Okay. And with.
My, my, Mr. Elliott, I don't have any particular information to share with you, of my understanding is that you will continue to operate on independent paths, and I do understand that the Board of Selectmen may be including cannabis as an agenda item at their next meeting on January, Jan. twelve, well, next week. Next week, but, but again, I, they will be independent paths, up to this point.
And what's our next meeting?
And if there's, if there's a change in that position at the next meeting, then you would let us know.
Of course.
I make a motion that we table application twenty-two dash thirty-two until our meeting on January eighteenth.
Second by Diane, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those, six-nothing, we table the discussion, application twenty-two dash thirty-two. Okay, General Commission busy. We have the people from the ridge up in that one to talk to us a little bit about the bond discussion.
Chief Chairman of the Commission, TJ Donahue for the, for the Silverman Group, SL Simmsbury, the ridge of Tilcot, Tilcot. Your staff got in touch with us a month ago and said that this commission wanted to hear from us on the slow progress on the, on the building at Hot Meadow. We've been disappointed with that, and your staff asked me to make sure that we could confirm that the bond which was put in place remained in place, and we submitted information to him, probably onto you, that that bond is a performance bond, it will be in place until it's either called by the Town of Simmsbury for cause, or the building's completed, and that, and that, that's the way those bonds work, and that's, that's what that is. We've talked about it, we understand that there's a significant level of disappointment with respect to progress of the building, and at, in one of our talks, Blake Silverman, the, the principal and the chief executive officer of Silverman is here tonight, and he just wanted to address the board to talk about the specifics of the, of the building not being completed. We're disappointed it's not completed, we expect it to be completed by June, we continue to work hard to get it rented, which is a work in progress, but. Tonight, Ugo Porcedi is here, who's the construction manager, and Blake is here to talk to the board.
Thanks, TJ. How you doing? Good to see some faces here, usually under better circumstances. What, first and foremost, I want to thank everybody for a true partnership with Town of Simmsbury. We've got a successful, almost three hundred units here, I think it's been a great project for the town as well as us. It's fully rented, with obviously two outstanding buildings that are, one going up and one that's been for a couple of years vacant. Just to give you a quick sort of background, we haven't spoken in many years, Silverman Group is based in New Jersey, about twenty-five million square feet of commercial space, about five thousand apartments, of which about two hundred ninety-nine sit up in Simmsbury, as well as almost twenty thousand, get a commercial of the twenty-five million, we're about twenty-two states today. So I want to sort of preface that saying, every one of our jobs are delayed, right? It's not an excuse, it's just the way it's been, it's tough to get, you know, supply chain issues, get through things soon, planning and zoning, et cetera. I, I will want to point out that you have some of the best planning people, as well as people that have inspected our site. They've been nothing but good partners to us, and I want to make sure I cite that the fact of us not finishing this building is not necessarily a problem on each side. It's obviously collaborative effort to sort of get the permits with an architect out of state who worked on this project, and I don't think he did a sense of service. But again, at the end of the day, I want you to understand of our commitment to getting this building done, hopefully faster than it's been. And our steel is a few weeks away getting here, the trusses are ordered, and the intent obviously is to get the building done as fast as possible. I know some of you might be disappointed with the promises that have been made, that reflects obviously upon us, this is the Silverman Group, has my name. We have a hundred and sixty people here, Ugo is my head of construction, he runs around the country, so I'm not placing blame on anybody here, it's, it's a disappointment. But at the same time, I think by now you have to understand that we're gonna commit to do what we've said we're gonna do, and we're gonna do it well. So for all those retail tenants in the audience, we're happy to help, our mature science ordinance says. You know, we're happy to obviously be a member of the community, we're gonna continue to hopefully build, we have a big track of land next door, we want to continue to be partners with the Town of Simmsbury. I think our total revenue for the town is almost two-point-six million dollars in tax revenue. I'm not pointing it out there because I'm looking for a pound of the back, it's just I want to tell you that we want to continue that path and, and provide more revenue for the, for the town. But again, I'm standing here because I want to make sure you understand that it's a disappointment that we're not done, we gave a commitment. And I think one of the members and I spoke beforehand, he was pretty disappointed in the way that it happened, and I want to take, you know, full blame with that, that it's not done, but I will tell you that it is gonna get done, and again, I appreciate the collaborative effort we have. We want to continue that next door as we continue to move down the path with George and the rest of his team to come up with a probable solution of that vacant piece of land. So again, I want to make sure I stood in front of you all with my face, looking in your eyes to tell you it's gonna get done, and we look forward to more successful years in the Town of Simmsbury. I always like to tell everybody, we have a lot of projects in Connecticut, I love Connecticut, my wife is from Connecticut, so I'm a choice but to love Connecticut. Not Simmsbury, but not, not too far, so again, we look forward to doing more projects here and having a good relationship with the town, so I want to make sure my face was in front of you to, to talk about this. Any questions you have with me now, I'm gonna stand here.
Do you have questions? I'm sure we're gonna ask.
Yes, yeah, well, we, listen, we're saying by June, it should be before that, but, you know, given the sort of issues we've had, you know, with, with getting the materials, you know, I don't want to overpromise you.
And, I mean, it was December thirty-first was, was the last promise.
Right.
Okay, so what date are you saying now?
I'm saying June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Yeah.
What concerns me is like, supply chain issues are not a new thing, I mean, we've known about supply chain for some time now, so I just, I, it concerns me that, what's to say that in June you're gonna not say that you have supply chain again, like, the whole point of a bond is to ensure that you meet the date that you promised.
Well, I think, let's, let's be perfectly clear, I don't think we got the permit, and I'm not blaming George's team on this, but we got a permit maybe seven weeks ago, eight weeks ago. Right, I mean, again, that wasn't because of your delay, it was because of your architect issues.
Let's be clear that it was not Steph's delay.
Yeah, well, I want, I want to be perfectly clear, though, we couldn't build anything for seven or eight weeks, so I, I want to make it very clear, we haven't been sitting, you know, with nothing going on, your point is valid, let's, let's be clear here, the steel's been ordered, the trusses are probably three weeks away, supply chain issues, if anybody tells anything different, we're moving away. So I'm not gonna be up here telling you anything different, but at the same time, I, I don't think six months, you know, is not gonna be an issue, an issue before, so.
That's what you guys said, it's six months ago.
Tell them we'll report them every name on the stats, on the exact stats.
Yeah, no, we're happy to give you, I mean, and they probably passed by everybody standing here, sitting here, probably passed by the building and, and see the construction, so. But we're happy to give you any progress report, usually.
Well, I mean, there are other people who have their own opinions, but I drive by there at least once, twice every day, I live nearby. And when I think we have a commitment, I don't want to belabor this, there was a commitment to have that building done by December thirty-first. This commission voted after endorsement orally by your representatives, they said, we didn't make it up, they said December thirty-first, when we said we wanted a date. They said December thirty-first, when we said we wanted a date. We didn't say that's too far away or that's not realistic. They said December thirty-first. And we're, some of us anyway, we're old-fashioned. We're literally old. But, and we believe a deal is a deal. And, and there are reasons to change a deal. There's a reasons to change an understanding, but until there's discussion about changing it, a deal's a deal. You guys said December thirty-first. We said, okay. We, I'm no construction expert, but I see, I'm driving by there. I see no workers, nothing going on. And when we get into September and October, I know as sure as can be, that building can't be done. But we don't hear from you. We don't hear from anybody. I don't know if anybody informed George, but it's not going to get done. And yet we hear nothing, but we're counting on you guys because you gave us December thirty-first. And so that's a disappointment that we don't want to see, you know, repeated. I'm not saying the sky's falling here, but, you know, that's, that's really the issue. It never was our concern that you wouldn't be able to finance the building, and we should get a bond so that we're covered. No, our concern, and it was evident in the meetings that led up to that meeting of June twentieth, our concern was having some control or feeling, maybe a fig leaf, that we had some control over, ensuring that the building would get done in a reasonable time. Because we gave up any control over the issuance of the COs. We just gave you everything that you could have, that you asked for, which was the ability to get COs and all the rest of your buildings. And I'm not trying to go back. I'm, I'm concerned about going forward. We have no, we have nothing but a promise now that you're going to get this done.
Well, I'm standing in front of you. I've sat for two hours. I'm not, I'm not trying to demean that, but, but in all due respect, I'm here because I understand that. And I want to get your building done, our building done. We want to get this retail building done. We want to get it leased, right? But I'm building it.
Yeah, that's actually what we want, is it to be leased.
Our relationship isn't...
Yeah, because we're, you know, we don't want to just build a building that sits empty. And so, you know, I don't know if you've had activity on leasing the other one or, you know... Because I think there are opportunities for that building, but that is something else that you could report on as well as the progress of the building is, have you had any talks with anyone about renting the other building or both buildings?
I spoke to our leasing team about the other building. There's an ongoing discussion with tenants for this small building. Again, I'm not sure if it does anything, but it's, I think it has four or five locations it's pending. We haven't, we haven't leased it.
No.
Again, twenty-five million feet. We're pretty good at leasing. It's been a difficult run to lease retail buildings, you know, there. Again, maybe it's not our forte in Simmsbury, but to be clear, I mean, it's not an easy task. Hasn't been a hard time renting the apartment, so. But we're building the building, and it's getting done, so, you know, that's our commitment, and that's what we're doing. With the stipulations of what you've given us before, of commercial, I think, and office space, nothing there has changed.
Well, I think the whole commission is concerned that we're down to, okay, it's been pushed off. And it wouldn't be the first time that something got pushed off again and again, even though with the best of intentions, things happen. So we, we gave up some control over the COs, and we didn't gain leverage on the bond. Is there something else you can do to make us feel better?
I mean, again, I'm not sure what that means.
First one?
Yeah, I got two, but I don't think you want them. I love them, but you may not. You know, the, the, the fact, the fact of the matter is, is that I'm not really sure what else we could, we could give. I mean, it's going, I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, be blatant, but it's going up. I mean, again, what was the flatboard five weeks ago if we went by it? Was the stair tower go up six weeks ago? We did get a late start, and I think there's a lot to blame there, and it's not your staff, so I know that George doesn't want to hear that. It's not. But I want to be frank, we didn't have a permit, so, you know, I don't think that there's any issue or concern. I'll do, there was any concern over any house that we did over that project, I totally wise. So I don't think, right, it may be wrong, but that's why.
But if you're not going to make a commitment, you should probably come in before you fail rather than a week after you fail to meet your commitments.
Right, I understand.
You know, so you could have come, you know, halfway through that six months to say, you know, things aren't going the way we said. Would you be willing to go another six months? But you don't wait until you miss the deadline to say, we missed the deadline.
We were in the town every day with building permits. We had to redesign that building. At the time that we made the deal and the commitment that we would have that done, we were in the building department with, with building, with building plans seeking permits, and we didn't get our permits until what a couple weeks ago. The town, we should have done before the commission. We should have been in direct communication with you. You hold the future of our development in your hands. We're very respectful, at, very respectful of the commission. But we're in, we're in Town Hall every day, and the town was on our site every week. So that the fact that we didn't communicate, the fact we were going to fail it, it was apparent to the world that we were not going to make it. And with supply chain issues and construction issues and planning issues and approval issues, there was a lot of things which caused us to miss that date. What you complain about, that I'm sorry about, is that we failed to have adequate communication directly to this board. But the Town of Simmsbury, we're, we're in that project for all.
How about if you come back to us in the second meeting in April?
We'll come back to you next meeting. At every meeting here, we'll, we'll give you progress reports every meeting.
Yeah, I'm not sure you need to come in person, but if we could get a status report in writing. Because, you know, you don't need to sit through two-hour meeting just to tell us that, you know, we're making progress.
It's part of it, it's part of it. I, I, we have no problem getting progress reports. I mean, Ugo's, you know, determined to get this thing done. He doesn't want us played either, it tells me.
I, I think a valuable lesson was learned by the commission that, that, you know, we continue in the future on projects to put in those requirements of the, you know, of the commercial buildings being, and, and not budgeting until we see it, but...
Well, just let me take a moment. I, we got this, a copy of this letter from...
Roundhill.
To you, Blake, from Roundhill. It's a copy of the letter. And it, it explains, they were asked to explain the bond. And I, I mentioned this to you, but, I mean, am I reading this right? There is no reference at all in this letter to a completion date. So all the conversations we had about the importance of a completion date and the agreement by your representatives to December thirty-first, to the end of December, it's not in the bond. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, you're reading that correctly.
There's no date in the bond.
In a performance bond, the completion date is not in the bond. The performance date that we set was on the record in the minutes at the meeting. That's where it is.
Yeah.
Well, so then, at that point, I work in insurance, but I don't really work in bonds. Like, isn't there an end to the date? And at that point, if the obligation isn't met, then the bond is called? Like, isn't that just the way a policy works?
It's completion bond, right? So it has to be completed, you're correct, but so...
But if we call...
Is that not been on the table to discuss?
Well, if, if you did, you would have to call that bond, and you would only have six hundred and eleven, you know, six hundred and eleven thousand dollars to finish the building, which probably is not enough money to finish the building.
Oh.
To finish it to the...
Wish I'd known that, I'd agree to it.
Shilling, finish shelling, not finish.
Yeah, yeah.
We got the picture.
I don't think, I shouldn't trick anybody here, quite honestly. I was just, I came here to apologize and get the building done.
The agreement that we thought we had, we didn't really. I'm not sure that the bond served any, any real purpose. In that, there's no date, and that's what was important to us.
We paid the premium, it's in place.
Yeah. Oh, I, I have no doubt about it. It doesn't, it's not serving a purpose.
It's a continuing premium too, a little bit of an incentive for us.
Yeah. Great, okay.
And at what point can we call the bond? Now?
See your own counsel.
No, but I mean, you said December thirty-first. Didn't make that.
That'd be a legal question. Maybe you can call it now, I don't know. Check, see what you want to do.
I'm just saying, at some point we have to know if we can or can't. What's the purpose of the bond?
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't, right, I don't want to speak for Bob, but he's not here any soon, but... If Bob's a smart guy, he could probably ask him. I, I, you know, I'm not going to comment. I mean, all I'm saying is I, I own the building. I have to get the building done. Whether I have a bond or not, that, that's not why I'm here. You know, again, I'm not trying to be difficult, dishonest, or, you know. I'm here because I'm going to complete the building, and that's why I'm here, right? That's why I'm here to tell you. I'm not here because it's a bond outstanding. If you're not, maybe you can call your, again, I'm not, yeah. That's, that's not my point here. It wasn't for trickery. It was here just to say, we're going to get the job done. We want to continue to work with the town, and, you know, that's really why I'm here. For you to complete this building, all due respect, right, is not, I don't think what you were looking to do and be to the town. I don't know if it's what the bond says, but I just, you know, I'm here because I want to continue our relationship with the town, know that what we did wasn't right, and we wanted, because he gave you our word. And again, that's why I'm here, not because there's a bond outstanding.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ugo Porcedi here can give you details of the construction difficulties on the site. Let's, can we take a minute?
We don't, we don't doubt your discretion.
Yeah, we believe it.
We believe that did happen.
But it was the communication that was wrong.
Well, we're, we're not wanting to...
I appreciate you taking the time to come to the...
We...
Or give us a personal reaction.
And if we get to June thirtieth and we're back in the same situation, we're not going to be happy.
And you shouldn't be, and it will be done. Otherwise, I'm going to be out there building myself. I know.
Do we have that written?
I only, George will pass my inspection.
It's on TV, so it must be true.
We appreciate you coming to explain.
Yeah.
And I know it's difficult for you, you've got a big business around.
So the agreement is some sort of a written monthly sort of update on, mostly focusing on the likelihood of completion on December thirty-first. We're very interested. If that's in jeopardy, when that becomes evident that there's... Send that note, that report on a piece of red paper or something.
Yeah, yeah. We can provide one, yes. Now that we can, now that everything is sorted online, we can. We can give you a schedule, that's number one. I think we can provide that, as well as monthly updates, your readings. There should be no issue.
Okay.
Okay, monthly, all right?
Thank you.
Yeah, and the status of the buildings and, and any rental activity. You don't have to give us names, just that...
And any help, we're, we're happy to take anybody. I'm not even looking for a large rent. We want, we're going to just provide a service for our tenants too, you know, so.
We've looked at...
My recommendation?
...ideas that need to be presented by somebody, so we'll look at anything.
All right, thank you, Ben.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good night, all right? Thank you.
Are we exhausted yet?
I passed out about half a minute.
Do we have anything else, or are we ready for a motion here? All right, I, I move that we adjourn?
Second, Ed.
Second by Diane, all in favor?
Aye.
All those, take care. Thank you.